Good evening, everyone. Let the call of meeting in order. Start off the pledge of allegiance, please. We have enough, Mr. Roselli, we're good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Out of notice this meeting was advertised at Edric Park Press and the Beacon in January 11th, 2024, and by posting this notice in the Fork River and Lenoa Harbor post offices by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Armato, accent. Mr. Conity?
Present.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Armato, also accent. Mrs. Claus?
Here.
And Mr. Peters?
Present.
All right, we're going to go into executive session. Be resolved that in that executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload, and confidential personnel matters. The subject matters of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately sixty minutes, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:00 PM. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion, Peters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll be back at seven o'clock. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're going to resume our meeting. We're going to start off with our new student representation, Kayla Fitzpatrick and Eric Stroing. Welcome.
My name is Kayla Fitzpatrick, and I am the SGA president, and tonight I bring to you some news from the Student Government Association. The SGA met on September 9th for our first meeting of the year. The 2024-2025 class officer election for our freshman class will be held at the end of this month. The sophomores are in charge of the SGA trunk on the October 29th trunk-or-treat. The juniors are brainstorming fundraisers, and the seniors are likewise working on our senior raffle and brainstorming a third and final fundraiser. And last of all, the executive board is pretty busy planning the October 2024 homecoming dance and other events, as well as working on a potential nine-through-twelve winter dance. And last of all, the next SGA meeting will take place on October 2nd.
Thank you, Kayla. Every month, the Student Government Association recognizes a student who goes above and beyond in all they do, and that they are a valuable asset to our school community. So for the month of September, we would like to recognize Ava Flanagan as our unsung hero.
Ava, are you here?
Nope.
Okay.
Ava Flanagan is an exceptional student who puts time, dedication, and hard work into all her classes. She is willing to help out other students with their education while still keeping herself at high standings. Ava is a part of the STEM Academy and is involved in many honors and AP classes at LTHS. She is also involved in LTHS women's soccer and basketball teams, putting in many hours of training, playing, and supporting her teammates. Ava also dedicates her time to the Student Government Association, Interact Club, and Biology Club. She is willing to help a friend in need and is always there when you need her. For these reasons, Ava Flanagan has been selected as the unsung hero for the month of September.
Thank you, guys. Great, great job.
Time out.
Are you Ava?
Yes.
Do it again. Go ahead, round two, round two. Go right up there. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Read it again. Bring it on. You gotta go up there. Ava, stay there. Spotlight's on you.
All right.
That was your practice round.
Here we go again. For the month of September, we would like to recognize Ava Flanagan as our unsung hero. Ava Flanagan is an exceptional student who puts time, dedication, and hard work into all our classes. She is willing to help out other students with their education while still keeping herself at high standings. Ava is a part of the STEM Academy and is involved in many honors and AP classes at LTHS. She is also involved in LTHS women's soccer and basketball teams, putting in many hours of training, playing, and supporting her teammates. Ava also dedicates her time to the Student Government Association, Interact Club, and Biology Club. She is willing to help a friend in need and is always there when you need her. For these reasons, Ava Flanagan has been selected as the unsung hero for the month of September.
Congratulations, Ava, and Mom, Dad, glad we got to do that again for you. You're late from a soccer game, right, Ava?
Yeah.
Okay, got you. Good. Next, I'd like to move on to superintendent report. Before I do that, just a brief moment on Dr. Pereira. For all the years, I'd like to thank her publicly for all the year's service to this district, the hard work that she's done. She's picked a new career. We're going to miss her, and we definitely have more than enough confidence in Mr. Litzky leading the ship right now. He's carrying two roles right now as acting superintendent and vice superintendent, so his schedule is overwhelming right now. We are in the midst of a superintendent search. We had our first meeting, and Mr. Litzky's more than welcome to apply, and we're looking for a full-time superintendent starting on July 1st, a contract for July 1st. And any further ado, it's yours. Thank you.
It's bad enough that the preschool kids think I live at the board office. I tell them that's my house. So, you know, and these, you know, it is, thank you very much, Mr. Peters, and certainly we wish Dr. Pereira the best, actually in her old career, so she's principal again in her retirement days. But, you know, we are off to really an excellent start to the school year, and that's not just me saying that. You know, all those hours in the summer and all the hours that we put in, you know, I just want to tell a couple of stories, you know, because every beginning of school year has a couple of things going on. This is kind of part of my report, but kind of how I kind of do things. You know, we had a couple of transportation things going on, and I have to tell you, we had a parent who was standing at the wrong bus stop, so we dropped off all the kids. The bus driver decided, I'll make another lap. They go around, they go around another time again. We got on the radios, we got on the phone, found the parent at the wrong bus stop, never lose track of our kids. It's just that, like, when the buses pull away, I almost feel like, wow, like, it's really cool how many kids we can move around, get them back to their houses, the caring ness that we have for all of our employees. But that was really an amazing story, as I'm on the radio, we're on the phone, we're trying to find the parents, and the bus driver was like, I got it. Does another lap around, we find the parent, and then we get them reunited with their young child, who was a kindergarten or preschooler, I forget. The second brief story, we had kind of not a great story, but it ends great. We had a bit of a sewer backup at one of our buildings at Lenoa Harbor School, and sure as heck, our guys come out with the backhoe, they dig up the sewer line, find the break, fix it, all, you know, quickly so that our kids wouldn't have any problem in the school. Really kind of amazing stories. I want to thank everybody. I want to thank our teachers that come in early. You won't, you can't, you don't understand when a teacher calls you, August 15th, says, I'm ready to go to work, I want to come in and do my classroom. As a high school guy, I'm like, are you crazy? And our K-8 teachers especially, and our high school people do it in some cases, too, not all, but some of our high school people do it, but they're coming in on August 15th, decorating the rooms, cleaning up what they have. It really is an amazing sight. And on top of all that, I can't thank our, anyone else I'm not thanking, I apologize, but all of our administrators, all the hard work that they put in. You know, we were cleaning the Milpon School up to the last second. We are enjoying twenty classrooms, have bathrooms now for our preschoolers, paid for, forty percent by the state, which is really great. We're still kind of wrapping up some things on that project, but they're all functional, they're all using them, that's really some great stuff, and our administrators make a lot of that happen. My last piece of my reporter commentary, I followed, like, I don't know, it's the newspaper, Channel 5, or one of the, one of the news outlets, and I think it was, I wouldn't say the name of the school, it was a school up north, and they were talking about a cellphone ban. And they're talking about the process that they're going to do, and all the meetings, and they might get it done by January 1st. And I'm thinking, we did it in four weeks, because we all come together, we all work hard on something, we all believe in something, and that's kind of what really sets us apart, I think. We don't mess around, we do what we got to do, and we always get the job done, whether it's our parents, our students, our teachers, our admin, even our Board of Education most of the time. You know, we really get those things done when we need to get them done, and we all row in the same direction, and that's really what we always want. So that's kind of like my commentary and final comments. Check out our Facebook and Twitter, I got them up and running. I hope they're getting updated frequently, if you're into that sort of a thing. So we're going to put some updates in there. My tease will be if we get bad weather, I'll put it up there first. If anybody wants to follow that, students can follow it as well if they want. So look at those things as we move along. With that, I'll come back and do board goals, but Jay, Principal King is going to come up and do our first round of our awesome seniors of the month. You have three this month, right?
Yes, sir.
Two regular and one vocational, which we put in probably about twenty years ago. We sort of recognize our awesome vocational kids as well, right?
Yeah, it's a great thing. All right. Board of Education, thank you, everyone in attendance. Welcome back to another school year. We've had a great opening. I am proud to announce our September seniors of the month. Our first senior of the month is Jacob Ahujian. Jacob, come on in.
We're here to celebrate our September seniors of the month. Our first senior of the month is Jacob Ahujian.
I'm Jacob Ahujian. I'm proud to be named September Senior of the Month here at Lacey Township High School.
All right, congratulations, Jacob, on winning senior of the month.
So after high school, first, what I plan to do is I plan to go to OCC, do two years there, and then I plan, after OCC, I plan to go to Columbia University to get a degree major in linguistics to work at the United Nations.
First off, I think Jacob is more British than I am, because he can do the perfect British accent. He knows all the facts about Britain. He always has his British T-shirts on, too, and I've even said to him, Jake, I think you might be more British than me.
Some of the clubs that I'm involved in in LTHS are National Honors Society, Student Government Association, ADA, and Interact.
I love having Jake in class because he has a great sense of humor, as well as being a really great student. He's very dedicated, isn't he?
Yeah. Jacob has overcome a lot in his life, hasn't he? And he has such an enthusiasm to learn.
Yeah.
Like, every day, no matter what day of the week, Monday, Friday, he's always eager to learn, always participates.
He's got a smile on his face.
Always just an absolute pleasure to have as a student.
Yeah, absolute pleasure. I think that's the best way to describe it.
Outside of school, I like to hang with my friends. I like to learn lang, I like to learn different languages, all about different cultures. I like to play sports.
Jacob is somebody that's going to go far in life.
Absolutely.
He is going to be very successful, and I am super proud of him.
Yeah, can't wait to see what he does.
Yeah, same. And I just want to say, once again, congratulations, you more than deserve this tremendous honor.
So proud.
While Jacob's here, he is here with his family extended and friends, so please a round of applause for him as well. Our next senior of the month is Katrina Conti. Katrina, come on down. Katrina's here with her family, so a round of applause for them as well. And Mr. White.
Our next senior of the month is Katrina Conti.
I'm Katrina Conti, and I'm proud to be named September Senior of the Month at Lacey Township High School.
Congratulations, Katrina Conti, on being named Senior of the Month.
Some of the sports and clubs I participate here at the high school is cross-country, track, lacrosse. I'm also part of the robotics club, the interact club, and NHS.
Sometime this spring, Katrina decided she was going to try something new, and that something new was women's lacrosse. And I got such a kick out of watching her learn this sport and be one of the fastest field players that I have ever seen, and again, seeing her be excited and having her teammates cheer her on, and scoring her first goal, and being, being a part of something was just a delight. It was so fun.
My future plans are go to college and then join the Air Force.
I got to tell you, ever since you were a freshman, you've always been academically driven, one who has been goal-oriented, and I tell you, personable all the time. Since your freshman year in STEM, you have truly grown as an individual. That shows in not only your leadership qualities, but also your cooperation skills through various clubs, activities, and sports, such as lacrosse, cross-country, and track. You are an absolute rock star when it comes to not only in the classroom, but also being a person out of the classroom.
Some of my favorite memories are spending time with my team during races or just practice.
Again, Katrina, you are so very deserving of being named Senior of the Month for September 2024. I'm very excited to see what the future holds for you. You deserve all the best.
And our September vocational senior of the month is Kara Crips. Kara, come on down.
And our vocational senior of the month for September is Kara Crips.
I'm Kara Crips, and I'm very happy to be September Senior of the Month for Lacey Township High School.
Well, Kara, you are an excellent, excellent, wonderful student who's been very focused in my Spanish classes. It's a pleasure and honor to have you now that you're a senior, ready to graduate, and I'm pretty sure you're going to be a bilingual professional in the future. Congratulations again, and see you in June.
I play tennis for Lacey, and I've been doing it for most of my high school career, and I really enjoy it. I'm a varsity this year, and I'm really excited for the opportunity for that.
In the classroom and on the tennis courts, Kara is a caring and kind person who helps her teammates and classmates whenever she is able to. Kara is always there to lend a hand, and she's always there to be supportive and help those around her.
My favorite things to do after school is play video games. I love playing dress-to-impress with my friends. I love playing with my dogs, and I love playing piano.
Kara was the one who made me buy a new, a new dog, because Kara is a dog lover. She has not only one, not two, but three dogs, and she tells me beautiful, wonderful things about her dog, and she trains me how to treat my dog. Now that I, that I have my dog, I appreciate all the help that Kara gave me.
Favorite memories of being in high school are just being with my friends, having fun in classes, learning, knowing my teachers and my fellow classmates.
Congratulations to Kara Crips for winning Vocational Senior of the Month.
Kara, she has her family as well, so a round of applause for her family as well. All right, Mr. Litzky, that finishes my presentation.
Thank you. And remember, September Senior of the Month, you're the most special, because they remembered you from last year. You were that good. It's always the most special of them. So congratulations, very good. Thank you, Principal King. All right, so briefly, before I allow our younger, or Mr. Peters, President Peters allows him to leave, we're going to talk real quick about board and district goals from last year. I'm going to give you a brief update, but I will post all of this online so that everybody can see it if they want. What happens every year is that the district sets goals for ourselves. It might be qualitative, it might be quantitative, it might involve numbers, it might involve student achievement, and then the board also sets goals for themselves that they try to achieve by the end of the year, and then we do a quick report out on it. I will post all this stuff up, and then by October, we'll set new goals for ourselves. Okay, so we don't, you know, and this is like overall overarching goals, they're not very specific to the buildings all the time, although they can be on occasion, because they usually influence something greater. So last year, we had a couple of learner success goals. We wanted grade five students to achieve better on their NWEA. We met that goal. We wanted fifty percent, we achieved fifty-eight percent. We had an SAT goal that revolved around students who took our prep course and improvement on how they did on the SAT. There were two pieces of that goal. One was a score increase, which we did. Our target was eight percent. We did better by ten percent for the students that took our SAT prep course. And then we wanted more students to complete the course. We wanted a fifty percent completion rate. We got eighty-five percent, so we achieved that goal as well. Hopefully, that'll show when we look at our SAT scores as well. We had a ranking goal. We hear a lot of word, you know, if everyone gets used as U.S. News and Report, we talk about ranking. We've kind of dissected that ranking. One of the ways to improve our ranking was to increase our access to AP exams. We wanted an increase of two point seven four tests, a two, two point zero. We ended up giving so many more tests, we exceeded that goal by two point seven four. So I'll give you the numbers. In 2022, 23, we had three hundred and sixteen exams for AP. Last year, we had three hundred and sixty-eight. So that's a big increase of access to AP exams for Lacey Township High School students. We had a social, emotional, and wellness goal for the middle school, giving them information about harassment, intimidation, and bullying, how to combat that, how to deal with it, how not to do it, and through the efforts of the high school administration and the high school, the middle school staff, they, they had sixteen activities over the course of the year. We had assemblies, we had Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we had a cellphone ban that they initiated halfway through the year, so they did lots of activities, and I'll post them up for everybody to see. We had a facility finance and safety goal, which where we created teams in each building that would be social, I call them social teams, but officially, they're called social behavioral threat assessment teams. We established them in every building, we established protocols, we established paperwork. We really had a lot of work done there to get those up and running. Now it's like automatic, if we feel that there's something that we should investigate, feel that there's a threat to a staff member or a student or anybody, we have those up and running, and we have a district team as well, so we achieved that goal. We had a, a goal that the district would assess the needs for a referendum. They met that goal. If everybody knows, we are going out to referendum in March, so that was a goal as well. We had a workshop session goal for the Board of Education. They would have quarterly workshops. They had them, they met that goal. We held those in the media center, I think for all four. Those were in the media center last year. There is, we're going to talk about our new goals, we may be doing that again. And the one where, I'll say we felt we partially achieved it, there's a board certification goal. You have five years to become board certified. It's about workshops where they come to us. Our representative, who was supposed to come to us from school boards, they ended up passing it off to a new person. We have one more year to achieve that goal. So we have to get, the board has to get sixteen credits. They've got seven, nine? Remember, it's nine? So we're going to work, we have till August of 2025 to complete that goal, and we'll give you an update on that next September. So that's where we are with goals, that's the report out on it. I'll post this up under the Board of Education link if anybody really wants to see it, and then come October, we'll set new goals and we'll publish those as well. Okay, so that's the big, the big report of things. All right.
Before, you done?
I am. Thank you very much. That's the end of my report.
Before we move on to public comment, any students that would like to leave now, we know you probably have a lot of homework and want to do things, you can do that now, unless you want to stay for a public comment and more to walk. Thank you, everyone, and congratulations, parents and students, on all your awards.
Have a good night. Thank you. See you soon. Bye, thank you.
Bye-bye. You, too.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Have a good night. Well, good to establish it, I mean.
We might as well. I'll introduce the Clock of Doom tonight.
Gives them a good visual cue, I think. I have a fancy bomb. Well, I think we did that once, and a member of the public called it the Clock of Doom.
You guys are staying?
And it kind of stuck, so we got rid of it.
You guys are staying?
We did do that once, I remember that.
Okay, next, we move on to the fun stuff. Public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand when called upon and state their name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. If you are a student, I do not want you saying your address or say I'm a student if you're going to speak under public comment. Comments will be addressed to me, the Board President. Comments are made in one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. We have a new Clock of Doom that you can see clearly. Who was that teacher that named it the Clock of Doom? Laurie, our, who was it?
Real loud, Maurice.
Yeah. So anyway, we now have a Clock of Doom, but you can see the timer, and it's going to make a thing, so please keep it to five minutes. The audience member recognized twice and so all who have wished comment had been recognized. This portion of this meeting is for public comments only. There will be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to inform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command to follow. Do we have anyone for a public comment? Are you a student here?
Yes.
Just say I'm a student. Thank you.
Hello. Hi. I am a student here at Lacey Township, and I want to preface this by saying, I understand staying engaged is important. I understand cell phones have changed the high school experience forever. With the shortening attention spans and increased documented bullying, the knee-jerk reaction is to completely condemn the technology and idea of the, of it being used in the building, but I just want to ask if this is truly the answer and the solution to this problem? Is putting up Big Brother-style posters in the hallway, telling people to stay engaged, and having staff in the lunchroom tell us to stuff every device that even resembles a two-way communicator into the crevices of our bag, never to be seen until 1:35? Really, the solution here is taking them away, or better yet, locking them away? Really, the appropriate response to this? I understand the need for regulation and rules, but we didn't ban automobiles the first, second, third, not even the millionth time somebody got hit by a car. You guys consistently tell us that we are basically adults at this point, and we need to have adult-like responsibility, but why are we still being treated like a child? I'm turning eighteen in December. Why can't I text my dying cancerous grandfather or my dying cancerous aunt in the lunchroom because you told me I cannot be trusted? As a victim of cyberbullying, I'm going to say every single case of it has happened outside of school, and I'm not speaking for all victims, but people who are going to break the rules and use technology to make fun of somebody aren't going to suddenly turn into an angel after the Board of Ed tells us to put them in a pocket or a box. As a student here, I try to follow the rules, and generally, I'm not on my phone, but phone usage cumulatively has not gone down. You don't know about it now, which is an insane liability. The unfortunate, all-too-statistically probable idea of a school shooter coming into this room, leaving the last communication with my family, being an iMessage that's treated like a taboo, disallowed idea, is heartbreaking. We need to learn how to include cell phones into our school life like they are in every other aspect of our life, or we need to give up, because they aren't going anywhere. Also, maybe we should focus less on staying engaged and more on being engaging in the first place. That's all. Thank you.
Can I reply to you? You made a comment about automobiles.
Yes.
Correct? The license. Let me ask you a question. If you drink and drive, what's going to happen to your driver's license? You pulled over?
I'm going to...
You're going to lose it. What happens when you're driving your car and you get too many tickets? What's going to happen?
Okay. Yeah, my license taken away.
Correct. So unfortunately, we had people in the school that were using their phones inappropriately, not correctly, correct?
Yes.
And we had to do that. We have a board member here that happened to drive through the school parking lot one day and go out to the football field, and on her way through, she noticed a numerous amount of students leaving the school, going out to the track. Guess what they were doing? Guess what they were doing?
Look.
They were engaged and talking to each other.
Yes.
They weren't on their phones. Their heads weren't down. They were actually having conversations.
But how is the students that are being called mad at each other? How is that representative of how I am as a student who historically hasn't had any issues on it?
I am so sorry that that happened, but unfortunately, there's a couple of bad apples out there. Our, our, can I, let me finish, please? You asked me a question, I'm trying to give you an answer. HIBs, do you know what a HIB is?
Yes, if harassment, intimidation, bullying.
Guess what? Our numbers were down this month.
Okay.
Part of the fact of the phone. Did you ever realize back in the day when there was a fight, uh, at school, it was probably second period, third period, or fourth period, and Mr. Kane brought this to our attention? And now, all of a sudden, there was a fight that made it two kids get off the bus? Why? Because they were yakking back and forth on the phone and social media overnight. Did you ever, let me finish. Did you ever notice that when there was a fight in the hallway, there isn't just twenty kids in the hallway that's there to see the fight? There's two hundred. How did that happen?
Because...
Of cell phones.
Well, why are we not actually addressing why the fights are happening? Why are we, the communications are, I, I just don't see how the correlation is, is existent.
Uh, a majority, a hundred percent of the board is for this ban, unfortunately. Uh, I'm also a volunteer at education for twenty-four years. I've never let cell phones in my classroom because I'm a shop teacher. And if a student gets distracted and has a problem with a power tool, there is an issue. But I'm sorry, that's the way you feel, but that is a rule that we set and a policy that's been effective to school that hasn't been followed in a while, and we're making sure that that policy is being set, and we're not gonna change our minds over it. You have every right to come up there and speak your mind about it and tell us how you feel about it, but unfortunately, that's the ground we're sticking to. It seems to be better. The teachers are appreciated. The parents are appreciated. The students are appreciated. You are one that showed up of four thousand kids to talk about the negativity. We don't know, there could be somebody else understand talking about it, but we've gotten way more positive out of this than negatives. I'm sorry.
And I'm always ashamed that people don't feel like they can, they can come and speak because I, I'm gonna tell you, I haven't met a student who has been in agreement of this, and I can't tell you of a teacher who's been in agreement of this either because they're being, they're being punished too. I mean, when they...
No, we're not punishing. We're just following a rule. We're just following a rule that was always established in the school, and we're, we're emphasizing on it.
Why are they saying they're being...
Mr. President, the five minutes has expired, and, and I do just wanna remind everyone, I, I thought the young man made very eloquent comments, but the five minutes is, is up, and this is public comment, not public debate back and forth.
Okay, you're right.
So I'd recommend we move on.
My apologies, you're right. I just wanted to give our side of the story, and I'll do that through my board member comment. My apologies. Anybody else for a public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Heather Scanlon, um, here on behalf of both the Lacy Municipal Alliance and our task force. First, let me thank the board for reinstating the advisor positions for Ada and Interact. I only regret that there are other clubs that have not been funded, uh, because we do feel they are beneficial to all of our students. As some of you know, we have been raising our concerns regarding the ever-increasing use of cell phones and the negative effects on our youth. And with all due respect to our student that spoke, and I understand his feelings, but we do feel there are so many positive sides to this. Therefore, I just wanna say and go on record that we wholeheartedly support the enforcement of the policy regarding cellphone use during school hours, and we'd like to thank the school board and the administration for taking this initiative on behalf of our students. Our students might not think so, but we know that it truly is a benefit to them. And many other states, it's not just Lacy Township School District, even the governors of almost ten states now have outlawed use of cell phones or have made it illegal to use of cell phones during the school day, as many other independent districts have all over the country. And we recognize there may be some bumps along the way, and, you know, maybe you wanna take some of the students' concerns into consideration as well, but we sincerely hope that the schools continue to enforce this policy. The task force particularly is made, uh, raising awareness about the impact of the cellphone use on the developing brain in particular is one of its missions. And, uh, we're gonna be, um, and of course, there are many other advantages as well. So we're gonna be at back-to-school night next week, and we're gonna have some literature informing parents of some of our, of the benefits of reducing cellphone use amongst our youth, as well as other things too. And we're gonna continue it as a campaign. Really, it's, it's not just in the schools that we are concerned about the excessive use of cell phones. It's also twenty-four hours a day when the students are using it. So that's what we'll be addressing. So thank you again for taking this initiative up.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else for a public comment? Anyone? Okay. Thank you. Board committee reports. Mr. Conity, would you like to start, please?
Mr. Bell has it.
Oh, my apology. Mr. Bell is handling the policy tonight, sir.
Uh, first up, discussion, cellphone policy. Uh, the committee is currently working on updating the cellphone policy and is looking for relevant examples, and will be tailoring it to the needs of the district. Policy regulations for review and discussion, P and R thirty-one sixty and P and R forty-one sixty. The committee discussed the revisions of, uh, to physical exams that are required of new employees to the district. The majority of the charges were, or changes, were a result of the update revisions to tuberculosis testing, TB screening is only required for teachers and other employees, and only students who are at high risk. Um, attendance policy, R fifty-two hundred. The committee has agreed to revise regulations, fifty-two hundred, that will provide students the ability to take advantage of one, state-excused absence for the purpose of attending a civic event. Civic events are generally classified as events sponsored by a government agency or nonprofit that incorporates elements of service learning. Civic events should address an issue of public concern such as, uh, community health or safety of the environment. Policy five-three-three-seven, animal service, or service animals. Uh, the committee agreed to table the discussion of service animals and therapy dogs for the next committee meeting. This will give the committee time to address some of the concerns in the service animal policy and investigate a therapy dog policy for Lacy Township. Um, safety patrol, policy five-eight-six-zero. Uh, the committee agreed to advance the policy for safety patrol, which takes place among our fifth grade students in the elementary school. And then, uh, policy forty, eighty-four sixty-seven, firearms and weapons revised. The committee agreed to revise the policy that governs firearms and weapons. Uh, the reason for this revision is due to the changes in language from the state of New Jersey. This revision does not substantially change the, the way schools handle firearms and weapons violations. And then, uh, policy ninety-one eighty-one, volunteer athletic coaches and co-curricular activity advisors. Uh, the committee previously agreed to bring this policy forward at their previous meeting, but made one more change where volunteers, uh, will bear the cost of the fingerprinting. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Class, finance, please?
Sure. Uh, we had a meeting. It was myself, Mr. Armato, Mr. Conity, uh, Mr. Zalinski, and Ms. Ornsby. Um, for facilities, uh, HVAC project update. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the status of the HVAC project at the high school. The project is complete. Pre-K project update. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the status of the pre-K project at Mill Pond. The project is mostly complete with a few minor tasks to be completed. The referendum, uh, we just had a, a general discussion about the referendum, um, and I believe the committee had a meeting this week. Finance, uh, policy finder update. Uh, Ms. Ornsby led the discussion on, to the committee on the status of the policy finder contract. The company's still working to find the coverage, uh, for the district. Budget freeze. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the budget freeze starting October first. Fixed asset inventory. Uh, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion for the need for the fixed, um, asset inventory. LT A H, LT HS Assistant Principal. Uh, Mr. Zalinski led a discussion for the need for an assistant, uh, principal at the high school. Discussion followed, and, um, we are hiring, um, another assistant. We're very short, um, up there, and, uh, Mr. King needs the support. Food services, uh, free and reduced lunch, lunch applications. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the status of free and reduced applications. Curriculum, we discussed, uh, teen mental health first aid agreement. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the agreement for teen mental health first aid. This agreement will be subject to the resolution, uh, tonight. Human resources, um, we are still going forward with the superintendent search, and we just had a discussion on that. And that was it. We are having a liaison committee meeting, uh, with the township. Sharon, do we have that date?
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth. Um, and we'll give updates next month on that. And that was it.
Ms. Walker, curriculum, please?
Yep. Curriculum, we met on, um, September tenth, Mrs. Armato and Mr. Zalinski and myself. Uh, we talked, uh, Mr. Zalinski shared with the committee the current class sizes of the elementary schools in grades one through five. He explained the numbers and how student numbers vary based on the subjects being taught. Mill Pond School, Mr. Zalinski presented a proposal where Principal Donahue is developing a protocol that would allow parent volunteers to participate in activities during the school day at Mill Pond Elementary School. A formal protocol is still being developed. K through twelve ELA standards, uh, Mr. Zalinski covered, he's a busy man, uh, covered the adoption of the new ELL standards that were adopted by the State Board of Education. Mr. Zalinski provided a crosswalk so the committee was able to see the differences between the old standards and the new standards. These new standards will be adopted at the September Board of Ed meeting and will cover grades K through twelve. We also talked about the math standards. We covered the adoption of the new math standards that were adopted, again, by the State Board of Ed. Mr. Zalinski provided a crosswalk so the committee would be able to see the differences between the old and the new. And these standards, again, will be, um, adopted by the Board of Education and implemented the new, in the year two thousand twen, for grades K through six for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and grades K through five in the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We discussed two novels that are being put up for, um, our approval tonight. Peter and the Star Catches, Star Catchers for English eleven honors, and the last Quantista. Did I say it right?
Uh, Sanista.
Sanista. Language arts for grade seven. He shared both novels with us, and, um, I took home the one I can't pronounce, and I, I'm reading it slowly. It's not my kind of genre, but, uh, I'm getting through it. So, um, the committee also looked at the review published by the common, by Common Sense Media. Both novels are on the agenda for tonight. Dina Watson from the New Jersey Department of Education visited Mill Pond, our preschool program, on September eighteenth and nineteenth, and the purpose of the visit was to tour the facilities and to look at the curriculum at the preschool. And kudos to Mr. Zalinski and the administrators and all the teachers at Mill Pond because they got high ratings for their program. Do you wanna share what they said, or...
Well, she does, it was her first tour of our facilities. Uh, she came in, uh, they give us like the year to get settled, which was last year. It was her first tour of our facilities, and, um, I mean, I'll quote her. She said, "Best I've ever seen in year one," and we're making her job easy.
Good.
So thanks to Principal Donahue over there. I mean, she's really doing a fantastic job, and it's, it's a big job.
Yeah. Um, next, the ELA pilots. Mr. Zalinski again shared with the committee that the elementary grades and the middle school would be piloting new ELA programs that could possibly be adopted for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. This is primarily due to the new state standards implemented this year. He shared, uh, Lacy Township's professional development plan, and he also shared the district mentoring plan for this year. Uh, as I think Kim said, um, we're going to vote tonight, um, on a memorandum of agreement for high school students, grades nine through twelve, to be educated in the curriculum of teen mental health first aid curriculum.
Correct.
And, uh, that's on the agenda for tonight. Uh, Mr. Zalinski shared this annual agreement, the Ocean County Memorandum of Understanding that allows Lacy Township High School to operate as a satellite campus for OCC. It also exists so students will benefit from the college courses they are able to take on and off the college campus. Under special education, the high school and the middle school are working with the New Jersey Center for Inclusive Education to continue and integrate our classrooms. All special education students, no matter what disability, will be integrated into all emergency drills for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That's something new.
Yeah, you, sometimes they didn't participate in all drills, now they're gonna do all drills. Fire drill, lockdown, anything, they'll be careful.
All-power professionals participated in a custom training program put on by Mr. Bond and Ms. Krakowski, and CPI trained all self-contained teachers on September fourth. It was an annual training. It was completed for all self-contained special education teachers. And the Challenger League fall schedule, I believe, is posted on the website?
Uh, I'll make sure it is.
Okay.
I think it is. It's under athletics.
Okay, under athletics.
I'll make sure of that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, technology, new Chromebooks were distributed in grades six to seven, a replacement server to host virtual environment in place, and they updated to Windows eleven in classrooms without any issues. And that's it. Our next meeting is, uh, October eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, meant to the referendum committee. We had our meeting on Tuesday, September seventeenth at three o'clock, and the tenants was myself, Mrs. Walker, Ms. Zalinski, Ms. Ormsy, Mr. Hopkins, Mr. Dubwich, Ms. Bishop, and Ms. Genter. Unfortunately, Mr. Armato could not make that meeting. Um, our topics were, uh, discussion. What was gonna be presented today at the five o'clock meeting, there was a five o'clock meeting today, uh, prior to the board meeting on the referendum. And, uh, we also had a discussion of development, uh, the communications to the committee, setting dates up for tours of the building and forums where we could sit with the public and discuss, uh, the referendum openly. We're trying to be as candid as possible with this, so the work we're trying to complete on the referendum. And that is it. Next, we have, uh, superintendent comment, Mr. Zalinski.
You know, I, I appreciate all the public comment. You know, I think that, uh, you know, it's important that we all, uh, get to be heard, you know, and we certainly wanna, uh, make sure that, um, when anybody ever has a question when they come here, that they call my office. I mean, that's really the key to the equation, uh, that, you know, anything, anytime, call my office. We'll always try to get back to you as soon as we can, uh, because public comment can be tricky. You know, you're here just to say something, but I want you to be able to have the answers before you get here. So please, feel, make sure you have that opportunity to call my office at any time. We'll route you to the right people, and we'll try to help you, as always. Um, it is our goal, it's always our mission. Uh, you know, we have four thousand students here, um, and, uh, you know, we're gonna do the best we can. So that's really my, my follow-up comment of the day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Conity, board member comments?
Welcome back. Uh, best of luck to the students and staff and everybody else, and, uh, have a great year.
Me? Uh, I just wanna congratulate Dr. Prayer, who's not here, obviously, and wish her a lot of luck in her new position. And I wanna thank Mr. Zalinski and all the administration and teachers and staff for such a smooth opening. Saw a lot of smiles on our, the kids' faces in our neighborhood, so, uh, congratulations to that. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Just welcome back and looking forward to the year.
Ms. Class?
Yeah. Um, I'd just like to welcome Mr. Zalinski into his new position of acting superintendent. Um, everyone, I'm sure already knows, he's doing two jobs, uh, the superintendent job
Everyone, I'm sure already knows, he's doing two jobs, the superintendent job and his assistant job. So please be patient. He's been doing an excellent job so far. It's been two weeks, but, you know...
It's only been two weeks.
It's been two weeks, but you're doing a great job. So, you know, just be patient with him and be patient with us and we're in good hands with Mr. Zalinski. So that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Student, because I don't know your name because you said student. I'm proud of you for going up there and speaking and speaking your piece and that took a lot of strength and energy and I appreciate that. Let's try and get something together. You grab a few group of your students and I'll grab a few group of mine. We'll sit down and we'll talk and have a conversation. I think that's the best way to do a thing is to work it out, communicating amongst each other.
I just wish this dismissive attitude wasn't your reaction. That's sort of what I was mentioning in my...
Right. Well, you... It was your public comment and it was my reflection on your comment. So that's what I'm saying. Let's try and set something up. I didn't like the way it went tonight either. So let's try and set it up in open forum where we can sit and communicate. And you bring up your valid points, why you think you should have a cellphone in school and we'll bring up our valid points, why you think you should.
I'm not saying there should be a cellphone in school. I'm saying it shouldn't be treated like a... It shouldn't be treated with like an 11.
Okay. Let's continue this conversation at another point. I'd love to meet with you, okay? And talk. All right? Thank you. Again, Dr. Prair, congratulations on your new adventures. Mr. Zalinski, we have plenty of faith in you here, doing well. Appreciate it. Teachers, thank you for supporting the ban that we enforced. And we're looking on possibly making changes next September in the school year, beginning of the year. Some more changes coming to the district that the board is liking the reactions of what we're getting so far. Could be possible uniforms or a proper dress code. So we'll... I'm just letting it out now. It's like it's no surprise, but we shall see. Okay? Anyway, that being said, let's move on to new business. A1, meeting minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Page 2, A2, list of bills. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes, but I need to abstain on 955... 955339289299 and 283300.
Thank you. Mrs. Walker?
I'm voting yes, except I have to abstain on bill number 953843.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes, I need to abstain on A2211210.
Thank you.
Page 2, transfers in S1701, A3 through A4. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Pages 3 through 6, finance facilities, A5 through A11. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
That was Dan and Kim. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 6, A12 through A13, student tuition and transportation. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Pages 6 to 7, other, A14 through A21. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes, but I need to abstain on... His Ormsby on A14, please.
Thank you. Mrs. Walker?
Yes. I have on item number 14, I have to abstain on Mrs. Amos and Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Pages 7, 8, policy of regulations, A22 and A23.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 8, HIBs, we had one this month. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. B, page 8, donations. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and thank you very much. Page 8C, programs and/curriculum. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 9D, professional days workshop/travel. Can I have a motion, please?
Move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?